Okay, call this order, welcome one, welcome all. Mr. Leahy, can you get things rolling? And, by the way, on behalf of council and everything, thank you for offering and accepting, moving forward and, you know, as interim manager during a time of transition and your experience and your depth of knowledge and your working relationships with us. And many people throughout the city will no doubt be a valued asset to us.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And I mean this, I think everybody around here knows I mean this. I'll never be able to live up to the honor that you would even consider me for this. It's just the privilege and the honor to do this is something I just really can't fathom. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I would like to say that after our item number A and right before discussion of the VB Strong Center, I had promised you by email that we would have an update on our preparations for Hurricane Doria, so...
And I think that's pretty mission essential at this point. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so first up, we have Robert Mathias, Assistant to the City Manager for Government and Military Affairs. And Bob is going to brief us on the status of the legislative package.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of council, great to be here again. This is a briefing on the 301st session of the Virginia General Assembly and Bob Mathias, 36th General Assembly Session. So, also have two of the members of Team Virginia Beach here today, Angie Beazik and Brendan Roberts. We've been introduced those folks before and they're an integral part of what we get done up in the General Assembly. We divided the package, again, as we have for the last seven or eight years, into two groupings, long-term policy positions, basically council positions from previous packages, and also new initiatives. So, I'll go through these fairly quickly. Voting rights, this came, again, from your previous package, but also from your Human Rights Commission. And we actually made some progress on this last year. Y'all have been asking for a number of years to basically have no excuse absentee voting, and we've been pursuing that. There have been probably 10 or 15 bills introduced the last four or five years, each year of the last four or five years, on this issue. Some have been just complete automatic, no-excuse voting. Some were just for folks 65 years and older, or less young, depending on the way you want to look at it. And so, during the last session, the General Assembly actually created a no-excuse voting process, starting 10 days before the election, where anyone could go in and not have to use any of the 11 excuses that you need and vote absentee in person. That does not take effect, however, until next November 20, for the 2020 elections. And also, gerrymandering, y'all have been supporting voting rights in that the voter should be able to pick their representatives rather than the other way around. So, the General Assembly has created, well, excuse me, had begun the process of amending the Virginia Constitution, where they passed a resolution that said they'll create a nonpartisan commission. That exact same language will have to be passed in the upcoming session in 2020, and then the voters would have to approve it in 2020, November 2020, and it would become effective on January 1st of 2021. That'd be just in time for the redistricting. And I did want to mention one thing about redistricting. The Department of Defense has put out an EDIC that for the 2020 census, service folks will be counted where they are stationed, not their home of record, but where they are stationed. And that will, I'm just guessing, it could be 40,000 additional people here in Hampton Roads. It certainly could probably keep Norfolk in the number-two position in the MSA designation and certainly help Virginia Beach and will probably keep this region from losing a member of the General Assembly, a House member, which most folks were predicting would happen. So, that is a very important outcome from the Department of Defense.
No, John?
I just have one question. We're asking for this nonpart, support this nonpartisan redistricting commission. Will we be supporting a nonparti, an independent commission to do the redistricting for Virginia Beach as a result of the 2020 census?
That would be your decision, sir.
I mean, you know, I'm just saying that's, you know, it's, we're implying one standard to others and not one to ourselves. I'm just pointing out the contradiction. Hopefully, we won't have a contradiction.
Oh, hadn't happened.
Yes, sir. The next one is solution to coastal flooding, the regional greenhouse gas initiative. This has been in your package for a number of years. And basically, Regi is in effect for the localities, the states north of us. New Jersey was in, then it was out, and it's back in. And this would basically have polluters, basically energy companies, buy credits, and the money would flow back to the state. I do have a mistake here. The refund, excuse me, the amount of money coming to Virginia is probably now down to about $75 million rather than the number I quoted here. And we also left at your place two pieces explaining Regi in a lot more detail. Again, this has been your package for several years. In fact, it was previously sponsored in the General Assembly by Delegate Villanueva. So, it received fairly bipartisan support, but obviously not enough to get it through the General Assembly. Department of Environmental Quality has, however, already created the guidelines for the regional greenhouse gas initiative. They are prohibited from enforcing those because of actions taken by the General Assembly in the last session where they stuck some language into the budget. And again, I think that's explained a little fuller in those papers I left with you. It would give, and it's sort of a he said, she said, or DEQ says and Dominion says. The DEQ does not think it'll have any instrumental increase in utility bills. Dominion thinks it will. But Dominion, in the last session, for instance, was neutral. They got up and testified that they were neutral on the legislation. High-speed rail, this has been in your package for several years. The state has finished an environmental impact statement for high-speed rail from Richmond to DC and from Richmond down to Raleigh. And we were told that they would, the state would start on a Tier III EIS for our area, both on the north side and the south side of Hampton Roads, after the DC to Richmond EIS was finished. And it's going to take about $27 million, and we've been supporting that. We just have not been successful in getting that funded. The rail, and as y'all know, it's not really high-speed rail, it's higher-speed rail. The rail right now is like up to 80 miles an hour. This would take it to perhaps 105, 110, but that would still provide a fairly quick trip from here to DC, for instance. Right now, it's about a four-hour, four-and-a-half-hour drive, or, excuse me, trip. They've made a big investment around Richmond at the Yakka Yard, where they spent about $130 million adding additional tracks to take care of the choke point there. And they've also spent about a quarter of a billion dollars in the DC area to improve throughput up there, primarily for freight. But since the passenger rail line is, also utilizes the freight CSX lines, what's good for freight is good for passenger rail. Mr. Jones has been a big proponent of this for a number of years. Menhaden fishing regulation, again, this has been in your package for several years. Menhaden are sort of the canary in the coal mine for the health of the bay. Two Mondays ago, Senator Distef had a event to discuss Menhaden fishing out at Lynnhaven Inlet, and had about 150 people there, had Senator Limwood Lewis from the peninsula, or, excuse me, from the eastern shore, and several other folks there. And there were, there's a lot of interest in basically taking the management of Menhaden, which is the only fish the General Assembly manages, and putting in with the experts at the Virginia Marine Resources Commission. That's still going to be heavy lift, but our delegation is very much in favor of this. Senator Distef, obviously, Senator Cosgrove, and Delegate Barry Knight has been a very big proponent of this moving forward. And we've testified, without a whole lot of success, a number of years, but we're still pursuing it. Certificate of Public Need has been in your package for a number of years. The two sides that were, are now in mediation, and we were going to try to get someone from the two sides to come and speak, but they're in a agreed-upon mediation, and they have concluded they're not going to talk outside of the process until they're finished. So, as we move closer to the General Assembly session, that mediation process gets finished, we're going to try to get a presentation to council. And Mr. Moss has always been concerned about COPN.
Right, because when they came before, you may recall, all this discussion was because of the number of people not called, covered by Medicaid, by Medicare, they were having all these losses despite the multi-million dollar salaries. They're losing lots of money. Well, now, those people are now covered, and so the number of people not covered. So, now the argument to impede competition, there's a great body of literature on both sides talking about, but competition usually always delivers the lowest price over the long run. So, I am interested, and maybe we shouldn't at a later date, discussing taking a side on an issue that's in mediation, when in fact, the reasoning that they've historically used has now been obviated by expansion of Medicaid, and we need to let competition see if it can't deliver lower costs.
The discussion I've heard of late is, and this is a very simplified discussion, COPN allows the hospitals to basically provide the services to folks that have hospitalization insurance, imaging and things like that. If we do away with COPN, the standalone clinics will come into play, and they will only take the expensive processes for which there's insurance reimbursement and take that money away from the charity hospitals. Again, we can, as we go further down the process, we'll try to get some presentations to you. Expansion of the Virginia Human Rights Act, again, has been in your package for quite some time. Besides hiring, discrimination based on sexual orientation or gender identity, we are also expanding, as we did last year, to housing, so that folks are not discriminated against because of their gender identity or sexual orientation. Our own Kelly Corvus Fowler, Delegate Fowler, put in legislation last year to ameliorate that. Full funding for the Step Virginia Program, this is a dental quote, what was in last year, there's some money amounts mentioned here. Team Virginia Beach actually has a meeting with Secretary Finance Lane in a couple of weeks, and we're going up. He's been kind enough to give us time, and his very busy schedule, to talk about the financial request or budgetary request from our package. So, we're going to certainly bring that up. And it's a priority for members of the General Assembly, and our delegation has been very strong in trying to get more money for mental health. This was the Commonwealth of Virginia Communications Tax Update, this was in the package again last year. Basically, this was a locally controlled tax on communications that we were putting into our 911 center. The General Assembly came in and, because they needed to at the time, redirected a lot of the revenue into state 911 services and have left us with less money than we had previously. And we're still providing the majority of the services, so we'd like for that issue to be addressed. We're now going into the new policy initiatives, and I know y'all are going to be very happy we have just four this year, I believe. The first one is heart disease presumption for salary EMS personnel. Right now, our fire police, et cetera, emergency services folks have presumption for heart attack, lung cancer, a number of illnesses is laid out in the code that we have here. We want to extend that to our salary EMS personnel. We think the effect on the state budget will be minimal. We've actually met with Mr. Wood's leadership with Delegate Knight, and I think because we've been able to show there'll be a very small hurt, as it were, on the state budget, that this is something that's needed. We just had a very young, especially compared to me, EMS worker had a heart attack, and she will not be covered. If she were a fire policeman, she would be covered.
That was the point I was going to make, so EMS, police, fire, and the sheriff's office can all go to the same scene. And if three of them have a cardiac arrest, they're covered, but the fourth is not. So, I think, I think they're doing the same thing, but it's just a, it's an equity thing. Of course, obviously, the General Assembly is going to be concerned about the impact around the rest of the state. The only other place that has career EMS is Portsmouth, and the information we got from, career standalone EMS, okay, not, not as part of fire, is Portsmouth, and they've got like 45 people or something like that. So, the cost is minimal, and basically, we're asking for the ability to do that. So, I thought, hopefully, Delegate Knight seems to think it's not, it's not impossible to get, so that's, hopefully, we'll be able to do it.
I felt very positive about that, based on our meeting and the data we've been able to provide. Equalized House Bill 599 funding, a long time ago, before I started in the General Assembly, this is a recurrent theme today, they created the HB 599 funding. Back 40 years ago or so, any city could annex land from an adjoining county. Cities couldn't annex land from cities, but cities could annex land from counties. That's how Richmond got bigger. That's how Chester, well, some of the other cities, Norfolk annexed a part of Prince's An County and Norfolk County in the old days. And so, the folks got together and said, in return for taking away your powers of annexation, unless it's a mutually agreeable annexation, which happens very occasionally, we're going to provide an amount of money to basically help fund your police department, your law enforcement office. And that money has been on a real roller coaster over the years. We're sort of at another downturn of that money. And this was basically just tried to re-equalize it back to where, close to where it should be if it were, had been in effect at the agreed-upon amount all these years. And obviously, that money flows into the general fund, but it certainly helps with law enforcement. Mr. Moss has requested a charter change, and I spoke to the city attorney earlier. To move this forward, you'll have to have a officially advertised public hearing that we'll have as part of your general public hearing on the legislative package, and I've got the dates for that farther on. And basically, it would just expand the current requirement that if you want to run for mayor, you have to resign from city council to include any council member running for any seat. And then the last one, payments institution to higher education for certain courses. This has been in the state code since 1966, and it basically would allow the state to pay for law enforcement officers to receive higher education. Seemingly, nobody has gone after this fund, so we've been working with Chief Severa and the delegation to set up a test fund, as it were, maybe $300,000 or $400,000, to see how much interest there is in providing this funding. The state didn't even know it was on the code. Chief Severa did some good research and found out about it. So, it's something, this is a fairly low-cost item statewide that we're going to pursue. The schedule for the rest of the package discussion is, you got your package on Friday. We're briefing today. There's going to be a public hearing on the legislative agenda, including the charter change, which the clerk will have to advertise. The final adoption is planned for October 15th, and then the first day of the session is January 8th. And it's a long session, 60 days, and we have all 140 members of the General Assembly up for election, as I'm sure y'all are all well aware, since we've, we're starting the so-called silly season now after September 1st. So, this is going to be a very interesting process moving forward. We will have at least two new members of our delegation, since Senator Wagner has stepped down. His seat is actually vacant right now, and Delegate Turpin is running for his Senate seat, and there are other folks running for her seat. So, any questions, Mr. Mayor?
So, one of the things we talked about before was the film office and film credit, tax credits, and things like that, and I noticed we don't have anything on that.
We don't, but we can certainly do something.
I think we ought to, because, like, as much, bunch of us remember when we went to Pharrell Williams' house a year or so ago, that was what he was very interested in. He brought virtually the entire General Assembly to his house to talk about it, so...
We provided y'all with some information about that back before something in the water. I'll pull that back up, and we'll have something and put it in your package by Friday.
So, what I understand is that we have credits that are similar to what Georgia has, but I think the difference is the cap, whereas, whereas Georgia doesn't have a cap and we do. And, you know, he made a good point when he talked about hidden figures not being filmed in Virginia because of, because of these tax credits. So, I think it would probably be a really good idea for us to take the lead on that in the state.
We will, sir.
So, I'd like to see that.
We'll have something in your package for Friday. We're actually in a good position to get some of the work from Georgia and North Carolina, actually, because of some decisions their General Assemblies have made, without going any further.
Mr. Moss, and then Sabrina, then Rosemary.
I didn't know if there was anything that was going to come out of all this scooter issue that we've been dealing with. Is there anything like, you know, providers can't, you know, avoid being liable for the op, you know, is there anything? I don't know what that would be, per se, but I know we've talked about there were some things we thought might be in our way, but also, we need to make sure that there's someone in the General Assembly locally here that would move that along. So, it has to be something that's, not saying they can't, but makes them carry the liability costs, and they can't escape liability. So, maybe if Mr. Mathias could, you know, do a check with, you know, build a staff or some other people, but I think that was one thing I thought that was missing. They're just wholesale, we're not liable, and it's off there. We've got to somehow, maybe, I don't know, I don't know what the right thing is, but it looks like we might need something that we don't have.
I'm sure there's something from other states, and I'll get with the city attorney and Scooter Solis, excuse me, Assistant to the City Manager Solis, and try to, we'll have something in your package by Friday if we can, and I'll also do some heart checks on how the folks feel about it.
I appreciate it very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sabrina?
Thank you for your report and your diligence and your work that you do on our behalf.
Thank you, ma'am. Team Virginia Beach.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Team Virginia Beach over there.
Thank you all, ladies, as well. So, I have a, it may have been discussed before, but I was interested in legislation on changing the definition for small business, because as I understand it, has not been successful. But I understand that if that definition is changed in a specific manner, it could address the disparity that we see among our small business owners.
We had it in the package last year, the year before that, the year before that, and maybe the year before that. There's been quite a lot of opposition from various folks. We looked at creating a micro-business, for instance, and they had just changed the definition of small businesses. But I'll pull up what we had in last year's package and get it to y'all on Friday, and also talk to Taylor to make sure that he's got some facts that we can utilize. I know there was a, one of Ms. Councilmember Wilson's friends last year was pretty adamant about it, and I thought they had made some incremental changes to it, but we'll certainly look into it, ma'am.
Thank you.
Rosemary?
Well, I just wanted to go back to the film thing, that the Development Authority was very much in support of changing the cap and all of that, and it could be that we might want to get a resolution from the Development Authority as well.
Okay. And again, we can, we will have some new members of General Assembly who will have room within their bill portfolios after the election, when the pre-filing is just about finished. But we can, you know, right up to the end of the, beginning of the session, we can always put something in, so...
Assembly?
Well, it had been planned that we were going to have this big regional meeting with all of our legislative folks.
August 28th.
August 28th.
Yes, ma'am.
The fact that we've come to be. Do we know what the regional package is proposed to look like, the HRPDC?
No, no, ma'am. They, to my knowledge, the PDC TPO Legislative Committee, of which I'm a member, hasn't met, so I don't think there's any package. I think they were going to try to see what support from the delegation was there, but I'll certainly get with Mr. Crum and provide y'all some information about things he's thinking about.
It may be that we would want to, you know, make sure we're supportive if there's something that we traditionally are.
Yeah, well, last year, you know, y'all were, or last year before that, you were successful with the putting a floor of the gas tax. We'd be losing 50, 60, 70 million dollars a year now for HR tax revenue. They would not be able to build Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel at $3.6 billion if that floor were not in place, because there'd be no way to sell the debt. So, there's one thing that we did at regional level that made all the difference in the world, and I think if you look at the price of gas here across the border, it's very comparable. I think our gas is actually cheaper than North Carolina's, they have a higher gas tax, so... And that, that's another issue that'll probably come up in the TPO. The General Assembly really is a horns dilemma about relying on gas taxes as a primary means of funding transportation, because I'm not sure where all the electricity is going to come from to power up or fuel up these batteries of all the electric cars we're going to have over the next 20 years. But the amount of gasoline being sold is going down, cars are more fuel-efficient, and electric cars are starting to make a pinch on the amount of gasoline that's sold.
Well, it's been very effective to be together regionally on several issues lately, like the educational funding and also the funding for emergency. We did manage to get that back into the...
U.S.C. funding.
U.S.C., I couldn't remember that. But it's, it's important that if there's some issues that we want, that we're, we're including those.
Yes, yes, ma'am, certainly.
Okay, anyone else? John?
I just want to applaud everyone's suppression appetite. I like, I think the smaller the legislative package is, the more success we have. So, I want to applaud the staff and ourselves as well for keeping the numbers down, because I think it's easier for our delegation to support us when it's a smaller number of things to achieve.
Mr. Mayor, I overlooked one of my lines here. There are two items we didn't include in your long-term package, or your long-term items, that's post-Labor Day, the General Assembly basically cut the ground up from underneath of us last year of this session, and uranium mining. The US Supreme Court gave a pretty strong opinion that Virginia could manage uranium mining any way it wanted to. We will remain eternally vigilant about any effort to change the state law, but in the interest of keeping the package brief, and there's lots of other threats out there we could have something in the package about, but we've left uranium mining and the post-Labor Day out of the package, just because one's, one is finished, there's not too much we can do about it. And the other, I think we're in, we're in good stead, certainly for the next several years.
Okay, thank you. And just if we can highlight, you know, especially the motion picture industry thing, a number of months ago, when the Vice Mayor and I met with the Governor, we brought this up to him, and there was an interest up there. And this could be a boon for this city, just in terms of recognition. And there has been some groups that we have met with that have expressed financially investing in this area, and we have, there are now a couple of sites that might be available to make this happen, so let's give this a priority.
Certainly, we'll certainly bring it up with Secretary Lane when we meet with him later this month.
Okay.
And we'll have something in your package this Friday on that, sir.
Appreciate it very much. Very good report, Bob.
Thank you very much.
All right, well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Steve Kovar to come up. He's going to introduce some of his staff, and we're going to give you a quick update on our preparations for Hurricane Dorian.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of councils. We thought it'd be important to give you a quick situational update on where we are with our preparations for the potential that this storm has for us. We had a, we had a meeting this morning at 11 o'clock in our Emergency Operations Center with all of our operational departments to, to lean forward and begin preparations for whatever potentialities we may have, whatever impacts we may have. The thing I will tell you is, there's a lot of uncertainty in this forecast track right now. Aaron will get into that. So, we just want to make sure that we prepare for the worst and, and hope for the best as we move through this operation. As you know, the, the Governor, you may or may not know, the Governor declared a state of emergency for our state. We went ahead and did a draft emergency declaration this morning, so that's in place should we, should we need to lean on that. There's no funding attached to that, it's just there should we need that as we move forward. So, with that, I'm going to ask Aaron to, to step up and give you a quick brief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I'm going to keep it short and sweet, because as Chief Kovar stated, there's still a great deal of uncertainty in this, but some key things that I'd like you all to be aware of. Go ahead. So, this is the latest track that came out from the hurricane center at 11:00 AM. The storm has rapidly increased to 3 miles an hour. It's at least moving, but at this speed right now, it's definitely slowed the timeline... It's at least moving, but at this speed right now, it's definitely slowed the timeline, so you can see that the hurricane off the coast of Outer Banks around 8:00 a.m. on Friday, so you can kind of see that timeline. It may, it may speed up, it may stay slowed down. That's the biggest challenge that we have right now, is understanding the speed. Just a reminder that the cone is the cone. It could be all the way to the left, it could be all the way to the right. So obviously, this is a significant concern for us. We want to stay leaning forward. So some key things from the National Weather Service, hold on one sec, some key things from the National Weather Service this morning on the conference call, really looking at a rainfall of three to six inches, but possibly more. Again, we are outside the window of a, we are at a low confidence of the forecast, but I want you all to be aware of. Winds in that 35 to 45 mile per hour sustained with gusts to 60 to 70 miles an hour. Storm surge, it is very early to tell what the storm surge is going to do for us. Obviously, that's a very significant concern. They are estimating it could potentially be three feet or more. Coastal flooding in the moderate to major. Again, based on the track of the storm, based on the speed of the storm, and how many tide cycles we go through, we're looking, once the storm passes us, in that possible nor easter format, you know, where we get the stacking tides in the Lynn Haven. If it's moving quickly, it may just be one tide cycle. If it is slow, we could be, we could see more than one tide cycle that it could stack in there and cause some flooding of the north. So let's talk about flooding in the south. So as the storm is coming up from the south, it's going to be pushing water ahead of it. So that's something that we're very keen on at this point, because it will be pushing the sound water. We will have some winds out of the south. As the storm passes, they will flip around and then come out of the north. So it will push it in, and then the storm will blow it out. But for us, that means we've got to be looking at the south at the beginning of this storm, and then we've got to be looking north as it's moving off. Again, speed is the big piece that we're looking at. So for us, flooding issues, depending on the amount of rain that we do see, that tidal flooding piece, we could see as well. I'm, I want to, the biggest thing I'm keeping an eye on is the storm surge as well. If it is pushing on top of the storm surge, we could have upwards of four or five feet, so things that we're keeping an eye on. It's still off the coast of Florida. A lot of things can change. I want to tell you that emergency management and the departments are leaning forward because of the lessons we've learned in the past, and we want to make sure that we're paying attention to this. If you want to switch to, just some key things that we talked about today. Chief Kovar mentioned the emergency declaration. We did sign that as of noon today. That's in line with where Norfolk is, Chesapeake is, and several of the other cities. EOC activation, probably looking at Thursday. We had a meeting today at 11:00. We will have another one tomorrow at 11:00, and so on, to continue that battle rhythm right now. Pre-storm preparations are going on right now. Pumping is going on, checking of equipment, fuel levels, staffing, models, all of that stuff is going on right now. We did have the shelter discussion. Schools are on board with us. We just have done, over the last month, some quick, some tours. We have a new process for our shelters. Our Tier One shelters are ready, and if we need to open them, they are available. Evacuation possibility. The Governor is having this discussion. The message right now is those that live in Zone A should be thinking about it in case the order does come out. They will make that decision by noon tomorrow, based on the evacuation timeline. They are having a Governor's Conference call later this afternoon, so hopefully we'll get a little bit better indication. Resource positioning. I will tell you that FEMA Region Three is leaning forward as well. They are looking at pre-positioning their logistics at Oceana, a Norfolk Naval Air Station. So they have sent their forward teams here to scope all of that out. And then the damage assessment process, we reviewed that today. Our real estate assessor actually just completed in this last month. His team did another training exercise on doing the damage assessment, so we are on board with that. And then obviously debris management. We've had, we just reviewed all the contracts and are ready for that moving forward. So I wanted to do quick and, quick and simple here. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions, comments? Michael.
Hi, Aaron. Thank you for that presentation. I've heard from a lot of neighbors, and especially folks who live in the neighborhoods that were impacted by Hurricane Matthew, and there's quite a bit of anxiety and uneasiness among those folks who live in those neighborhoods, and understandably so.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm wondering if there's anything that you could share about what the city is doing to prepare those neighborhoods and to mitigate and to potentially reduce the impacts that a storm like this could have in those neighborhoods? Particularly, I think it's worth noting, that the storm track at least looks similar to the track that Hurricane Matthew took, recognizing there are distinct differences in other ways. And I wonder if you could just talk a little bit about that and share with the public some of the steps that are being taken specifically that would, that would help to reduce the impacts that flooding could have in those neighborhoods.
So the biggest thing that's going on right now with Public Works is the VAC trucks are out, the inspections of the storm drains, things like that that could, could cause that localized flooding or exacerbate it. So they are out there. Public Works has completed, as you stated earlier, has completed some of their projects to help. Also, the pumping down, so that the stormwater system can hold more. The plus for us in this is that we haven't had a Julia, a Hermine, and then a Julia, and then Matthew. So we've had about 15 inches of rain over the last three months, and we have had a soggy summer. So obviously, we are concerned about that. But that is what the pre-storm preparations are for, is getting out in the neighborhoods, specifically the ones that have had the historical problems, and making sure that the inspections and the cleanouts are going on.
So, Council, and I can add a little bit to that. Since Hurricane Matthew, Public Works has spent about $6 million in dredging the major canal system that drains Windsor Woods. They are in the, they have also CCTV, CCTV'd and cleaned, I guess cleaned first, then CCTV'd the entire system, taken a lot of debris out of the pipes that were actually keeping them from draining as well. And they're in the process now of making repairs. It's just that that will, those repairs are ongoing, going thing. They have recently run a, their detailed stormwater models. They've identified a handful of properties that they think, depending on how this storm develops and how high the Lynn Haven gets, could be threatening, could be threatened. And they are contacting those properties, and they're going to make some arrangements with sandbags and things like that to try to help them. And they're going to put a pump into a, there's a large BMP pond off of Rosemont Road, and that is the one that, when that backs up, it threatens this particular group of houses. And they're going to see if they can pump that down in advance of the storm. But Matthew dropped about 12 inches of rain over about 12 hours. Here, we're, I think we're looking at much smaller amounts, we hope, over a little bit longer period of time. So things will perform better. That doesn't mean they'll perform perfectly. The Windsor Woods system, it was built a long, long time ago to very lesser standards than we would have had them built today.
Well, I appreciate that information, and I know that the residents who are, as I mentioned, understandably experiencing anxiety with any storm approaching, appreciate as much information as we can possibly share. So I want to thank you very much.
And that's our goal, is to keep, since there's a lot of uncertainty in this, is we will be providing an executive brief to you each day, so that you have those talking points, if you'd like to share them, within your communities.
Okay, Barbara, then Jessica.
Mr. Leahy, I know one of our most favorite topics is the Asheville Park pumping, and since, I guess this is the first time since Michael, could you please kind of address how that, if you have an idea of how much water we're talking about? But I was particularly thinking in relation to this comment that coming up, it's going to be pushing from the south. Of course, when it goes back, it'll go north, and we'll blow it out. What is the time, do we have any idea?
No.
About the length of time that might be, or the timeframe? I do notice right now, the creeks are somewhat down, but the wind's north now, but it's going to go south. So have you all got any kind of idea of just what the timeframe is and when people can expect these things to happen?
Not at this time.
Not this time, no. The windy.com, you've probably heard of that, I think, but that actually will, you can type in, select a number one of the models, and it will show you what it thinks based on these models, and we can get some assessments of that and get them to you. As you know, Public Works is pumping, operating the pumps at Asheville Park, and they will pump about 25 acre feet of water out of those ponds. It is important that everybody understand that they are pumping these ponds down below their natural spillway, so when the rains come, the first 25 acre feet of rainwater will fill, refill the pond, it will not go downstream. So the net effect downstream of pumping the water in Asheville Park is essentially zero. We will pump it down now, when the levels are low, and so the rain, so this rainwater and runoff will not hit when the levels are high. And we will get you some summary statistics.
We will get some, tomorrow is going to be a little bit better indication of what our timelines are going to be.
Well, at least, I guess, the speed of the storm, as it's going to speed up. It's supposed to be fast, so.
Right, and that's what we're kind of waiting to see. It's still, it's still lumbering right now.
And another point is, it's going to be about 50 miles east of the track that Matthew took, so we would like it to go another 50 miles.
It's just not wet.
Yeah.
And the southerly winds that were predicted are a lot more gentle than the northerly and easterly winds that are predicted.
Yeah, yep.
Jessica.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but for some reason, I, don't, do we have a sandbag program for residents to come and fill if they want, or is that?
Mark Johnson is setting that up.
Okay, so that will be.
Yep, we will, we will have that offered again. That was a great success in Florence, and we will continue that.
Excellent. And then I, I guess, Tom, my question's for you. Are we having an action plan for testing the models that we've already modeled, with the results of what happens, I guess, better and different?
Well, as, our models are calibrated to real-world conditions in that when storms occur and we're able to get information about what level and what time, and we have good rain gauge data, so the models are calibrated today. But yes, we will collect data from this storm, and we will then run the model and see how well did the model predict this storm. That is, that's an ongoing thing constantly.
I guess if we could just have, if, when, I guess, hopefully this will be a non-event, but in the event that it is anything other than that, I would, I would love for that data to be shared with us.
All right. Hey, thank you. Rosemary.
And this is Barbara's area, but the wind tides, what is this going to do? Wind tides and pushing that water.
Well, that's kind of what I was asking. We'll have to, that timeframe is the.
Yeah, so once we have a good indication of the timeframe, that, that information will be put out. But we will see a push from the storm coming up, but once it passes us, it will be, be pushing from the north quite significantly, so blow the water out quite quickly.
It's a promise.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I have one other question.
Oh, please, go right ahead.
Really for Mr. Kovar. I know it's preliminary, and we don't, we don't know the track or the, I have a good sense of the impact, but in addition to some of the concerns about flooding, I've been hearing from a lot of people with concerns about public safety. And I wonder if you could just describe a little bit more information about what could be deployed, or what you are considering to prepare to deploy to protect the public safety of the residents?
Absolutely. So, couple of things. All of our public safety agencies have marine assets, so police, fire, EMS, all have marine assets. We have high-water vehicles that we typically have a plan of how we deploy those. So the flood-prone areas is, is the areas that we pre-deploy these assets, so they're in those, those neighborhoods, at those fire stations, ready to be deployed.
At what point would you make that decision?
So once we get a better handle on the track and what the forecast is, all of those assets are being assembled and readied for an operational period today, so they'll be, they'll be ready to go certainly by tomorrow.
Thank you. I think people will be really happy to hear that.
Thanks.
Okay, anybody else at this point? Okay, thank you, and it's far better to over-prepare for something like this and, you know, to be ready, but I think we have a very capable crew getting us ready. Thank you, really appreciate it. Mr. Leahy?
So, next up on the agenda is a briefing on our progress with setting up the VB Strong Center. I'd like to introduce Daniel Prochin from the Office of Emergency Management.
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers, for having me here today. I do want to quickly introduce our Centerra partners with us in this long-term recovery process. Allison Glan over here, we have Andy Stevenson over here, and Ali Strum right there in the back. So I'm here today to talk to you about our VB Strong Center. Unfortunately, after the May 31 tragedy, we've been working to, you know, assemble and develop long-term recovery plans that will help our victims in their healing following the tragedy. So next slide. So what is the VB Strong Center? Essentially, it's a long-term recovery center that will help our victims, our first responders, the community at large, to recover from, from what they've experienced. And there are numerous services that are going to be provided at the center. Many are traditional mental health, counseling, one-on-one, direct services, other non-traditional services such as alternative therapies, support groups, and stuff like that. In addition to that, we have connections with community resources, so we want to make sure that we're providing that bridge to everything else that's offered through the community. And then finally, awareness and education. There's a lot of education to be had around what recovery after a mass violence situation looks like, because it is very nuanced. It's a particular type of recovery, and we want to make sure that everyone has that understanding, that not only to help in their recovery process, but to better provide them services. So the VB Strong Center is being funded by the Anti-Terrorism and Emergency Assistance Program. That's a program through the Department of Justice Office for Victims of Crime. They've been with us almost since day one of this horrific tragedy to provide us with technical advice. They, our advisors, come to us from other communities that have been stricken by this across the country. And there, the grant program is really to help establish a center, staff it, and, and fund it. So not only are they there for, you know, for the center, but they've been working alongside of us to make sure that what we're doing follows best practices. And in addition, the grant program helps us support, supplement our local resources. And I should note, it's specifically for mass violence victims, again, that nuanced area. And really, the, our first appropriation through this grant program was appropriated on August 20th, so we received an initial $3 million that will help us with the initial startup. As we go through this, our, our technical advisors are working with us on a needs assessment to kind of continuously keep assessing our needs as, as it relates to victims, so that we can maintain that touch point and give them exactly what they're looking for. So in terms of the partnership, we, you know, one of the best practices that were told to us by the technical advisors were to bring in a third-party provider to manage a center. And with Centerra being a huge, you know, our healthcare provider here in the city, and having a lot of resources and assets at our hands, we thought they would be an excellent partner. So luckily, they, they came on board to help us with this. We have executed an MOU with them. We also executed a service provider agreement, and that was both signed, fully executed last Monday on August 26. So we've been working very closely since they've come on board to get them up to speed on kind of where we're at and how we need to conceptualize the establishment of this center. So they'll be managing and staffing it and overseeing it with city coordination. These, we've been holding weekly CERN committee meetings to make sure that they're up to speed. We also have touch points with them as they need, and then they have direct access to our technical advisors at the Department of Justice as well. And, you know, this is a long-term partnership. This is, the center is anticipated to be stood up for about three years through this grant specifically, and so we are going to continue to work with Centerra to kind of maintain that touch point, provide the city perspective and the resources and what we think the needs are, so that they're not alone. You know, this is a really joint partnership, and we can make sure it's as effective as it can be for our victims. So the location. We, again, using outside technical advice, we were told that it would probably be best to have it somewhere that's close to the municipal center, but not right on campus. So as we were going through our search, Landstown Commons was, kind of popped into our head right away. our head right away. We conducted walkthroughs about a month ago. And we have, you know, established a site to be at Landstown, at the offices at Landstown Center. And we really think that will be a good accessible place for, for a lot of people. It's right across the street from the Dam Neck and Public Utilities Annex over there. The center, the key thing to stress here, we wanted a flexible space, right? We wanted to be able to have small consultation rooms where there can be one-on-one counseling services. We also wanted there to be large spaces to be able to have the group therapies, the alternative therapies, various types of therapies. So the center will definitely meet our needs, and Centerra is underway, working on a lease with them as we speak. They've met with their architects, and they're working on their build-out process. So everything's moving along really well in terms of that. And the center will be made as comfortable a place as possible for our victims, considering, you know, considering the tragedy. So we really want to focus on victim first. How, how can we help them get the needs they, they deserve after this? In terms of our programming there, long-term service provision, so we, we keep saying here in the city, it's an assess and adapt, right? We know, we know we're moving through different phases of recovery, and everyone moves through that in, in their own time. So we do know that there are core services we want to provide here. Those are, of course, you know, first and foremost, navigation and case management. We want to be able to direct victims to the services they need based on their circumstances, because everyone had a different circumstance following this tragedy. So the navigators and case managements will be there to kind of provide that one-on-one support and that touch point for our victims as they move through their recovery process. We also know we want to have a virtual presence. So having that website there that provides them the resources they need, also having a 24/7 crisis hotline should, should they need it after hours. Mental health counseling, that can take many forms. That can be individual, that can be family, group-based, and so forth. Facilitated gatherings and support groups. What we've heard through, through the Department of Justice is really that we need to generate a, a feeling of togetherness. We need to, to try to provide as many opportunities as possible for people to be together who've experienced this. So that's our goal through those facilitated gatherings and support groups. Alternative therapies as well. Again, everyone, everyone processes their grief in different ways, and to be able to offer different solutions that might meet their needs, art therapies, meditation, yoga, all of that. So that's what would be considered under the alternative therapies. Support for trauma suffered by first responders. We know, and again, through our technical advisors, we know that our first responders had a very unique experience as well through all of this. And we wanted to make sure that they get, you know, the services they need as they, as they move forward. So really, it's just, we're planning to have a safety, public safety wellness coordinator there in the center that can help first responders navigate through their own recovery process in this. And then finally, onsite child supervision for, for parents who may need to access the center during, you know, while they're there. And it's very important to note, so this grant, it, it offers the supports free of charge there at the center. So all of it's being funded by the grant. Anything that's kind of referred out to, to different insurance or whatnot, those will be covered based on their insurance and, and what they're applicable for. But onsite there at the center, that is really covered, covered through the grant. So it's unfortunate that we have to go through this, but, you know, with the help of, of this Anti-Terrorism and Emergency Assistance Program, it's, it's really kind of helped form our needs. One thing I do want to note as well, it's a best practice to set up these recovery centers. They're set up in other locations that have been stricken by, by this tragedy, Orlando, Las Vegas, and so forth. So there are, are other models that, that, out there that we're using to kind of, to assess and understand kind of what they, what their needs are versus ours. Ours is also a very unique situation. You know, as we were going through the recovery process from the beginning, we heard someone say, you know, what do these look like? And everyone is really different. Each, each situation like this mass violence situation is different. And ours is just, you know, just like that. So VB Strong opening, we are scheduled for October. We are moving as, as fast as we can. You know, Centerra, again, is working with the architects on the build-out. So we don't have an exact timeline, you know, built out yet, except for to say October is exactly what we're aiming for, and we're working to get, get the services set up as, as quick as possible. Centerra held a very successful job fair last week on Thursday and had a lot of good outcomes from that. So we're, we're excited to partner with Centerra on this. We're, you know, obviously very sad that it's in a situation like this. But we do want to keep the needs of victims first and foremost in our minds as we, as we walk through this process. So with that said.
Any questions by anybody? Sabrina, Guy, Aaron, and then Barbara.
I'm especially pleased to see that the center is opening and that the services that are offered are free of charge. My concern, and I guess my question, lies with staff members who are employed by a temporary agency. Will they have access to those services free of charge? And then also, how, I guess, how, how are we getting the word out to let people know these services are available? Because I, I am hearing from some individuals that they don't believe a lot is being done to reach out to those who are on staff, who have trauma every day and are experiencing some really terrible effects. So how are we making sure we get this information out to our staff, letting them know, hey, these services are going to be available, temporary, people who are temp, work with temp services, and so forth?
Absolutely. So in regards to your first question, so the Department of Justice has had to define what a victim means for this. Everyone in Building Two, whether they were full-time employees, they were temporary staff, or they were volunteers, or they're just, you know, community members that were in the building, they are considered victims. And so are, in this immediate area right around Building Two, if anyone was close to it, you know, could see or hear what was going on, they are being defined as victims, as well as emergency operation staff, first responders, staff who work the family reunification, family assistance centers. So if they meet that victim definition, they are absolutely, they are entitled to one-on-one services. Regardless of whether they're a victim or not, we are not turning anyone away. So that's the important thing to note. If they're not included in that victim definition, they are welcome to everything that is not one-on-one based. So all the group therapies, the support groups, and community gatherings. In regards to your communications, so we have, luckily, we have a great community engagement partner, Andy Stevenson, on board from Centerra's side. Centerra is leading the marketing and communications regarding the center itself. They're taking the lead on the center. They actually had a meeting last week with Julie Hill, our Communications Director, to discuss the engagement and, and marketing regarding this, because we know that just as important as it is for us to establish the center, it is to communicate what the center offers and to make it be a valuable resource for everyone in the community, including our victims here. So they really stress that community engagement part, and so that's why we want to set up the website. We're, we're working through different engagement strategies as we speak. Andy, if you have more to add on that?
Yeah, very good. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thanks for having us. Absolutely.
And if you can speak from the microphone, please.
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you so much. Great question. As, as we set this thing up, we definitely want to know that all our members and our residents and our neighbors and friends, that these services are going to be available. How are we going to help the community heal? And by number one, we need to let them know that it's coming. We've got a great marketing department. We're working with the city to make sure that there's some good collaboration. There's going to be a great digital platform and website that'll be 24/7. There's a crisis hotline. And then, excuse me, a dedicated community engagement consultant at the center, who's really going to be, their job is to be out into the community, going to civic leagues, rotary clubs, Kiwanis the Clubs, anywhere that we can drop something off so people know that we're here to help the city of Virginia Beach heal. So that's our mission.
Thank you. Okay, Guy, then Aaron, Barbara, Rosemary.
Thank you for all the work that you and Centerra have done on this. I'm just interested in the circumstances. I know it's not unusual for cities to sponsor third-party medical facilities and, for their employees, but this is a really unusual situation where all of the employees are, are suffering from the same tragedy at the same time, and all related to a city building. I'm just wondering, are the people staffing this, getting any particular extra training or assistance in preparing for it? I think the mental health aspects of this are, are challenging, and I'm, I'm very, I'm just curious as to how you're going to execute the mission.
Absolutely. I'll speak to it real quick, and then I'll let Allison kind of give her update from the staffing side. So we understand it's very nuanced. And that's kind of, as, as we've kind of gotten the outside technical consulting, that's really what they've been stressing. In every shape or form in this recovery, it's very nuanced and something that, you know, we haven't experienced before. In terms of, of getting that, kind of the right people for the right job, we are the, we are working to set up community provider trainings. And that's not, that's to include Centerra staff, but also to include everyone in the community, to have a day-long training on what it means to provide support following a mass violence incident. So that's one of the trainings that we will offer to Centerra staff, and then I'll have Allison speak to kind of how they're getting their staff on-boarded.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. So as we are hiring, we're also, we're, of course, hiring folks that are licensed clinicians or masters prepared in behavioral health. So licensed clinical social workers, masters of social work, counseling positions. Our manager will have, I mean, all of our people will be behaviorally trained and fully capable of managing this. They all have a trauma-informed care approach in their background. Maybe not the front desk folks, but, you know, all of the people who will be doing counseling and running support groups or doing the activities with the, with the clients will be trained behaviorally. Any other questions?
Aaron?
Thank you all for your presentation here. My questions are along the lines of, it's great that the services rendered at the center are free of charge, but is there any room for, in this grant, to pay for the referrals? With insurance costs and everything that are high, and being that this, this tragedy happened here, is there any room also in the partnership with Centerra if the victims or victims' families are related or are referred to a Centerra partner, that some of those costs are mitigated, or the grant can take care of some of those costs?
So we are, we are looking and working with our consultants through the Department of Justice to advise us on kind of what's, what's able to be covered under the grant and what's not. So there are some things that are still, that are able to be covered through the grant, so vocational rehabilitation, so helping our employees kind of get up to speed and so forth. In terms of the insurance and those types of costs, there are other resources that are available that we really want to stress to, to the victims. First and foremost is workers' compensation, making sure that workers, especially in Building Two, are submitting their claims to, to be able to have some of those extra costs covered. Also, in additional, in addition, the Virginia Victims Fund, they are considered a payer of last resort. So for expenses that are not covered through workers' compensation or through other means, can be covered through the Virginia Victims Fund. That's only for Building Two, anyone who was in Building Two that day, and first responders, except for law enforcement. But that Virginia Victims Fund is really crucial as a part of that, kind of that ongoing resource, and again, catching anyone, any expenses that are outside of that, that purview.
I think it would, it would help a lot if on this, on the programming, that we also kind of make sure we set out a section in here that helps them with those costs, that they know what's available.
Absolutely.
So when they're referred, they aren't just dropped with bills or potentially not going to, to those referrals, they can't, they can't afford to care. So I think that's, that's a, a major and important task that I know council, we should look at as well to help mitigate some of the costs of the victims and their families when they get these referrals. So I, I like for, for Centerra, we can all meet again, but come up with a way that when they are referred, that they aren't, we aren't just saying, all right, now you got your referral, and the costs are high, and they may not go to take those referrals in hand. So I, I think that's very important.
Absolutely. And as they go through their intake process, that's a part of the process, is kind of assessing their needs. What are they, what are their needs, and how can we best help them to move forward? And the financial resources piece is, is extremely important through that, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Aaron. Barbara, then Rosemary.
Well, a lot of what I was asking has been answered with the communication piece. But one thing that, you know, we keep hearing and, and reading, the particular 16 victims, and maybe their families who don't feel that they have been kept employed. I know that we, you know, do the broad communication, but for these folks, I, I think we have tried from the beginning to go that extra step. And I would just suggest if we could go back to the honor guards who were assigned to each of the families and see if they could particularly make these folks know that all of this is available?
Yes. So Danielle is, is really spearheading from my office, the VB Strong Center. We're working as an entire steering committee to address all the issues across the board and, and the communication piece with the victims. We continue to expand and, and contribute our best communication piece through that, to them. We are, we are constantly getting feedback, and some of the honor guard folks are still engaged. We also have caseworkers with, with several of the families as well that we're communicating through. And as we continue to, as we get the doors open and continue to move forward, that communication is, is a top priority for us.
Okay. Rosemary?
It's incredible what y'all are doing, and, and will be a blessing for so many people. But my question's a little bit more practical of, is there going to be good signage to be able to find this place? And how, how is everybody supposed to, to find the center?
Yes, absolutely. So, so that community engagement point of contact that's hired at the center will work closely with Andy's group at Centerra, as well as the city, to identify the best kind of marketing materials around that. We know it's, it's on the second floor of that Landstown Commons Center. So we know it's going to be crucial to, to have a lot of signage around there. Make sure, we want to have a good balance, right? We want to give, be, let it be as discreet as possible, but also give, give victims an opportunity to know where they're going. So absolutely, Centerra's working on signage. Exactly. Yep, exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I was speaking, Sabrina?
I wanted to say something to ask Mr. Leahy.
Okay, go right ahead, please.
Do you think, is it possible, and I don't know, you can tell me what you can provide in terms of details for staff, because I'm interested in just finding out how they're doing as far as, and how things are going with workers' comp, you know, that sort of thing? Are, are there requests being executed in a timely manner? Do, do we have any that are on hold? Is, is there a potential issue or concern? Just wanted to know how that's going. Is there anything that you can?
Well, the next topic we're going to bring up is our risk management update. And Jeff Radomil can answer a couple of his questions in abstract. He can, he certainly wouldn't burrow down to any individual case, but he can answer a couple of questions like that.
General, general would be good. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. You know, just, you know, a comment. A couple months ago, I was speaking to a mayor in another city, you know, that went through a tragedy a number of years ago. And he indicated one of the things they underestimated was the length of time some people were going to need for, you know, beyond a couple of years. We may be talking lifetime for some folks here. And I'm just hoping as, when we're talking about the planning of this, this important, critical part, that, you know, we really look long, you know, long-term to, you know, help a lot of folks. There were a lot of people in Building Two at the time. And, you know, so I think that's a critical component. The other thing is too, I had spoke to a young woman, and maybe you might have covered this, but, you know, for a point of clarification, she was working in Building Two as a contractor. How were these folks being accommodated?
Contractors are absolutely included in that victim definition. So anyone, again, anyone, doesn't matter if they were community, or even, even media technically, you know, they were in and around that as well. So it's anyone who, who was impacted that day in and around the building. So absolutely contracted employees are included in that victim definition.
Okay, could I pass the name and phone number on to you?
Oh, of course.
Okay, thank you very much.
Absolutely. And.
Guy?
One more question, if I may. The, what is the total value of this grant? I'm just curious.
So, Kim, from my, also from my office is managing all the grants. So a key thing with this is there's actually three grant programs. The law enforcement grant is up to a half a million dollars to cover overtime and, and support for law enforcement specifically, but also will cover training moving forward over the next three years. but also will cover training moving forward over the next three years. The, the AEAP grant as a whole could be anywhere between eight and 11 million dollars. Now, the $3 million that was approved, and I'm sorry, the $3 million grant has a different name that I'm blanking on, but that's the upfront money that we're using now. That actually comes out of the overall AEAP grant. So, if they grant us $11 million, you take the, the $3 million has already been fronted. So, so that's the, that's the, the nuance of, of that particular grant. But we are managing that. So, the needs assessment helps in understa, if it's going to be the seven or eight million or the 10 or 11 million. And that's why those technical assistance become so important because we can, hey, is there the ability to cover some of these costs, some of these healthcare costs? Is there ability to cover, you know, other, other projects that may help our, our community recover?
I mean, is it?
Counselor, I would supplement what Erin just said. We were advised at the last meeting by the federal representatives that this grant writing and needs assessment can be a lengthy process. And that's why Erin can't give you a little bit better number. They are in the process of calculating the need so they can then write the grant. But we do have this $3 million upfront money.
Just to clarify one point. So, when you're, is, is it a balancing of money that's needed now versus, as the mayor said, this could last a long time?
So, here's, that's the thing that we will have to start talking about. So, these grants cover three years. So, Orlando just decided when their, or decided after their three years were up, that Orlando took over the costs and kept the recovery center open. Las Vegas is determining that at this point. So, those are the things that we have to start talking about, you know, as we get the doors open and start moving through that process. At three years, these grant programs end, and the city has to decide what the next steps are going to be.
In past history, we, we should not expect a renewal of the grant.
No, there is no renewal of this, no.
Jessica?
You mentioned that Orlando is taking over the cost of theirs.
Yes.
And Las Vegas is
They're determining what, what they're going to do.
Do we have any idea, or have we reached out to either of those municipalities to find out why they're keeping it open? Not, obviously, I know why, but like the impact that they're having in terms of the long-term of
So, it's very situational dependent. So, with Las Vegas, because people came from other locations to Las Vegas, a lot of the support has been virtual and pushed back to the localities that these people went home to. So, they, they haven't seen the foot traffic that, so Orlando kind of has shifted their emphasis on what they're doing in their Orlando, One Orlando, Orlando Strong Center, to support the LGBTQ plus community. And that's really been the shift for them. So, so it's very, it's been very community-specific on how they're, why they keep it open, or why they close it down, and, and what the ongoing support is.
Are we aware of any of them that have closed?
Sandy Hook has closed down. I'm trying to
Sandy Hook has closed down. Sandy Hook has closed down. Aurora, and Aurora, Colorado has closed down. And I believe another one.
I know. I'm trying to, unfortunately, this, this list is
For the ones that have stayed open though, is there a general lifespan?
For most of, and, and so that's why this is something that we will have to discuss. This was in our workforce. We have people that worked in that building, that it was their first year. So, are they going to be with us for 20 years, 30 years? And how do, what does that look like for us in the future? A lot of these locations have been random locations, people in various communities. So, it's been kind of turning it over back to self-care. Whereas, we are a closed community. This occurred in our closed community. And we have employees that we may be supporting for a while. So, assess and adapt has been our mantra from the beginning. And I think we're going to have to keep doing that. Three years may not be appropriate for us, and we may have to think about what that looks like in the future.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else at this point? All right, thank you for most critical and important, you know, update. Thank you very much. As we get ready for the next one, there's some complex stuff in here. And I'm going to ask if we could hold questions off until the end. And I'm going to be, turn over to Mr. Wood. I'm going to get that information to them on that person that made the inquiry.
Okay. All right, so Vice Mayor, we have from our Department of Finance, our risk manager, Jeff Radomil, and he's going to provide the FY 2019 review of our risk management portfolio. And he may also be able to provide you a little bit of insight to some of the questions that were asked.
Yeah, feel free. Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor and council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk a little bit about finance. As you know, risk management is a division of finance, our department. The city's been self-insured since 1976. Risk management is an internal service fund. We do handle all of the workers' compensation claims, auto, auto liability, general liability claims. We serve as the internal insurance company for the city. So, we do a lot of the basic functions that a typical insurance company does. We do charge back all of our fees to the departments based on a prorata basis. So, it is a true cost of government. We also work with occupational health and safety on enterprise risk management. I know that's a buzzword, and that's one of the things that we're, we're moving for in the, in the future to, to do more enterprise risk management. Risk management functions, we in risk management have oversight of the third-party administrator, which is CorVel, who handles all of our workers' compensation claims. I do have one adjuster in my building who is a city employee, who is a workers' compensation adjuster. She oversees CorVel and a lot of the expenses and, and medical processes, and does speak to our employees on a daily basis about their claims. We also in my building have a CorVel supervisor. So, at any time, from a customer service standpoint, either myself, the CorVel supervisor, or Patty Copenhagen, who is the city's work comp adjuster, is in the building and available for questions. We also manage and process all the auto liability and general liability claims. We had managed all of the fleet vehicles. So, if you saw a title, it would say City of Virginia Beach Risk Management as the, the title owner. We are the, I am the coordinator for citywide disaster recovery. So, in cases similar to Hurricane Matthew, I get all the departments together and we go through all the FEMA and Virginia Department of Emergency Management forms and, and reimbursement for that. We do pursue subrogation. And subrogation is, is basically the insurance word for if you do damage to my property, we go after your insurance company to recover those funds. So, the next two slides are, are the insurance policies we do have in place. It is not all-encompassing, but we do have the, the big three, which is, the first one is property insurance. We do have a blanket $1 billion property policy. And so, we, we actually insure over a billion dollars in assets. We have excess liability. We have a large self-insured retention, which is, in, in layman's terms, is just a really big deductible. So, we are responsible for the first $2 million of any loss. We have excess workers' compensation, which, that insurance company is Safety National. Our self-insured retention deductible for each individual injury is 1.25 million. And remember, once we do have an accepted workers' compensation claim, they do get medical benefits for life. And I did mention 1976 was the first year we were self-insured, and I still have a claim that's open from 1976. I was five when that happened. We do have two crime policies, fiduciary liability and deferred compensation. We have hole in marina. We have a, a lot of boats, being a coastal community, police, fire, sheriff, the public works, parks and rec, all the different areas. Two marinas we have, medical professional, primarily human services. We have two helicopters. And at this point, we, I think we have 23 drones in the city. We have equine insurance, which is horse insurance. So, the police horses are insured through us. We have a $1 million liability policy for the farmer's market. And brand new to the last renewal, we renew every March 1 is cyber. I know cyber's been a big thing in the, in the news lately. And we do have a $5 million first party and $5 million third-party policy for cyber liability. So, in FY 2019, these are the results. Our total expenses were 15.1 million. Workers' compensation is 51% of that, it's 7.7 million. Insurance premiums, all the insurance that I just spoke to and a few others, equal to about 2.7 million dollars. General liability, auto liability claims, 3.6 million. That's 23% of my book of business. And our administrative costs, all the costs for administration is 1.2 million as well. Payments by element. So, one of the things that I talked about was if you do have a workers' compensation claim, you have medical benefits for life. One of the things that, that I like to talk to everybody about is our current book of business and how many claims that we have where employees are still active, and how many claims that are still active, but the employees are inactive with the city. Meaning, they're either retired or they're no longer with the city, or they're doing another job. So, when you look at that, there's a significant percentage of, of my book of business that I pay month in and month out on, who are no longer inactive employees. Next slide. So, as you can see, the trend line for the last five fiscal year has been a positive one. I was actually hired January 1 of 2015, and I flipped, I flipped, it looked exactly opposite in, in, before that. So, we've had a really good positive impact. All of this information does include at least 329 claims from the 531 event. You can see our number of claims has been consistent, except for FY 19. And the number of claims paid, which is, my goal is to get that down as low as possible, was moving in that direction as well, until our event of 531. 531 event. So, I want to publicly recognize all of our employees in finance who've done, done a wonderful job, particularly Patty Copenhagen, Sam Brigham, Marcia Boomer, and Jessa Johnson, who since day one have been in constant contact with all of the 16 that we discussed earlier and their families, and developed really good relationships with some of them. And, and so, the team that, that I have has been, been really good. The whole finance department's been really good about this event, given the, the nature of the event. To, to date, there is 440 claims, and they still are coming in. And just to put that in perspective, that's over one quarter of the year's worth of work. That stems from one day. I have been able to confirm that CorVel has been able to at least review all of the claims and, and reach out to employees. But, it, it has been a little bit of a turnaround time to get all of that done. The city does have stopgap insurance. So, when I talk about that 1.2, 1.25 million dollar SIR, self-insured retention with Safety National, that is typically per person. So, in terms of 440, instead of charging us the, the 1.25 per each 440, they've recognized this as one event. And so, all we are going to have to pay as a city, on those accepted claims that they accept after us, is 1.25 million one-time, which is a big deal. So, they, our self-insure, our excess workers' compensation insurance does follow us very closely, especially some of the ones that are more severe injured. But does follow us very closely on how we're handling our claims, and what we do accept and what we don't accept. As I said before, CorVel is our third-party administrator who is handling all of our claims. And through the grant that Danielle spoke about earlier, we were able to get CorVel to bring in another resource to help alleviate some time for our, for our inside adjuster to, to kind of get away from the workers' compensation world a little while and do some other work within finance. But for at least the next 18 months, we have another claims adjuster that will take her spot, that is hired by CorVel, and we'll reimburse them through the grant for at least the next 18 months, for now. And we'll assess that, because that's when CorVel's contract's up. And we'll reassess that need when we go out for RFP for that as well. And I know you had some questions about 531. And I'll, let me wait till the end.
Jeff, I'll finish that thing, and then we'll get, I'll get back into it.
All right. So, top 10 departments. As you can see, those are the top 10 departments. Those are the typical top 10 departments when you go from municipality to municipality. You can see the police have made a nice, nice movement down. But most of those departments have either stayed pretty same or, or gotten better over the last five years. So, police have made a significant impact to their, their workers' compensation claims. This is a high-level brief in preparation for my annual report that will come out later this year. But wanted to give you an idea of the actual, these are actually paid claims from last fiscal year. Of note, the, the first one is defense of the arena claim. And the second one was defense of Indy kegger. So, those are the two big ones. Our book of business is, is small enough to where those type of payments are outliers and, and, you know, pretty quickly what they are. These are the number of claims, and, and just kind of their proportion of, of the book of business. General liability last fiscal year, it actually flip-flopped typically the first four years I was here. It was auto liability was the, the 65% side, general liability 35% side. But for last fiscal year, it was 65, 35, to general liability being the larger side. And, and that also follows with the total paid. As we move forward over the next month or so, I'm going to do some deep dives into the analysis of all of the, the workers' compensation claims, where it's happening, who's this happening to, and what kind of enterprise risk management we can put forth to, to try to avoid. Because that's the coup de grace, is how do we avoid these accidents versus being reactive, being more proactive versus being reactive. Next slide is the risk management fund. As I said, risk management is an internal service fund. We just had a, an actual, actual, actual liability report done. Our future liabilities stand at 41.4 million. We do have $30 million in cash, which you can see over the last five fiscal years has grown tremendously. We still have an ending net position of 11.6 million. But if you'll remember, the, 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 the goal was to be 70% funded, and we are at 72, show victory. What do we do in to manage costs? So, it's, it's a combination of, of things that we still do today and that we've done over, over the last couple of years. We've really embraced using enterprise risk management to utilize resources and expenses properly on each claim. As you may remember, House Bill 378 created a medical fee schedule. And so, we've done an analysis of what, what that looks like. It's about a 2% overall cost reduction in, in workers' comp. So, not the waterfall that, that I think some people were led to believe, but it is definitely, as some people have, have described it as a haircut to, to the rising increase in medical costs and workers' compensation. We, we are proactive. Shout out to Human Resources and our Human Resources Department. We are very proactive in our return to work. The, the longer somebody stays out of work, the, the less likely they are to come back. So, Scott and his group do a great job. The cost allocation model, so we do charge everything back to the departments based on a prorata beta, prorata basis. So, they do, every department head and their staff know what their costs are. And we do have really detailed training and meetings with the larger departments, who are typically the top 10 on those workers' compensation, but also, you know, auto liability, general liability, to see where claims are coming from, why they're, they're coming, and see if we can mitigate those or put some training in place. We have regular claim sessions with those larger groups as well to talk about the injuries and the status of those employees as, as they are out and come back to work. And, and we've really done a whole lot over the last couple of years in, in developing and implementing workplace safety and health initiatives, and, and moving the, the platform, you know, to ever, it seems like everybody wants to track their steps and, you know, and, and that's a good thing. So, those initiatives have been positive. Questions?
Questions? Okay, Mr. Power, Jess, and then Sabrina.
Thank you. Did that report, Jeff. It's very enlightening. We could talk about this a long time.
Absolutely.
I'll just try to be brief, though. Would you explain to us and for the listening, watching audience, a more, a more practical definition of what enterprise risk management means?
Enterprise risk management is, is a holistic approach to risk management. It is looking at your data. Traditional risk management is very reactive. You have a claim, you deal with the claim, and, and that's where it really stops, more operational. Enterprise's risk management looks at the data and says, okay, what day of the week is, is our claims handled? And so, we are working on doing a predictive analysis on where vehicle accidents happen. We have GIS data that says, okay, these are intersections within the city of Virginia Beach that have a ton of accidents. Okay, how many of our employees are getting injured in those accidents? From workers' compensation, we have analysis that says, okay, the majority of my workers are getting injured on a Monday or on a Wednesday, on a Friday, so we have to figure out why that's happening and kind of do that, you know, black belt analysis, the five whys, you know, why is it happening? Well, why is it happening? Why is that? You know, and get to the underlying cause of why these accidents or these injuries are happening, so we can put training and things in place before they happen and reduce all of the number of accidents, but also the payout as well.
Okay, next, Jess.
I have a lot of questions.
Sabrina, go right ahead, please.
I have a couple of questions. I wanted to follow up on my inquiries about the staff and as far as the work, the work compensation claims that have been brought forth. Do you know of, I guess, if there's any, if there's a bottleneck or a challenge to processing the claims? And if so, how is that being handled? That's my first part question.
At first, it was volume, and now that we've gotten through it, I'm not, there have been certain understandings of how workers' compensation works and doesn't work. And so, really, what we've been able to do over the last couple of weeks is go out to Public Works, go out to Public Utilities, go out to the individual departments. And I've personally gone out and done that and said, okay, here's the workers' compensation process, here's my card, if you have any issues, come see me. Just walking through what that process is, the initial bottleneck was the sheer volume, but as I've been able to get out and my staff has been able to get out and answer those questions, and we've had a few concerns that have come up that we've been able to address. It's not perfect, but we've been able to address any singular concern that have come out.
Have you noticed a significant amount of claims being denied?
No.
Then my last question is, how are claims processed for temporary employees?
So, are you referring to Abacus employees?
Correct.
Right. So, Abacus employees are not considered city employees in the traditional sense, so they do not qualify for workers' compensation benefits. But I've been brought up to speed on many of the issues with Abacus employees specifically, and there's a few employees that I've tried to help out specifically, really kind of doing the same thing with them as with our employees of explaining what the process is, how to go about the process, what paperwork they need to fill out, who they need to talk to, because there's one Abacus employee that is currently working in Public Utilities that had a certain concern and it was brought to my attention, and I walked over there and I asked her if she was comfortable, you know, giving me any information about it, because I have to kind of see some information that's of personal nature and help her fill out Claim for Benefits Form, who to talk to, who's the insurance company, because the benefit with the city is that I'm the internal insurance company, I am the employee advocate. They don't have an employee advocate. They're, they're not, I'm not going to say who the insurance company is, but their insurance company is not incentivized to help their workforce like our insurance companies incentivize to help our workforce.
And so, if there is anyone that's having an issue processing a claim and they happen to work for Abacus or another temp agency, refer them to you.
Absolutely. I can at least walk them through the process, identify the paperwork needed, get that information they need from their insurance company. I cannot give legal advice, nor will I give legal advice. But what I can do is I can at least help them with the process and provide empathy to them and understanding, and at least the one that I've helped out significantly appears as moving forward pretty quickly. So, once I've cleared up that jam, it opened up pretty quickly.
Very good.
Jeff, just to clarify, when you said Abacus employees were not eligible for workman's compensation, you meant under Virginia Beaches?
Under Virginia Beaches, yes.
But they are eligible under Abacus's workman's compensation.
Yes.
Good. Jessica.
I have a question. I have questions about 531 and I have separate questions, so I'll start with the ones that aren't related. The cyber liability, you mentioned 5 million is what we've got. Was that the max we could buy?
It is not the max that we could buy, but we did a specific analysis based upon what other claims were out there at the time and what our exposure was, and based upon the premium that we pay for the 5 million, 5 million, and that exposure, that was the best policy, because we got quoted 1 million, 1 million, 3 million, 3 million, 5 million, 5 million, and 10 million, 10 million. 10 million, 10 million was the largest one that we were quoted, and that was overkill.
Do you anticipate that policy needing to grow in the future?
Potentially. And we, so we do renewals every March 1st, and we're about ready to go through our application process right now.
You bid out all the policies?
Absolutely.
Okay. And we do it every year?
Absolutely.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes.
Bless who's every job better.
Thank you.
That was one of my questions. On Slide 11, the auto general liability, the claims paid on the economic development link, that's just in defense.
Absolutely, yes.
Correct, correct. That's what I wanted to clarify. So, then with respect to 531, have we been notified by any of our providers that are paying out any type of claims that there's going to be adverse effects on our premium or continued insurance?
So, as being the insurance professional that I am, I'm already trying, doing the budget for next fiscal year. Right now, I'm looking conservatively about an 8 percent increase.
That's it?
Thinking probably by the end of the time for renewal, it'll be somewhere around 13.
Yeah. Well, so that leaves my next question. What are you anticipating coming back to us saying for the budget? I mean, have you, do you have any idea of what the budget impact's going to be for the next cycle in terms of what kind of funding you're going to need or resources?
To be determined. You know, I think over the last five years, we've had some positive results, and so we've increased our position favorably. So, I'm taking that into consideration when I do the budget of where we're at and our $30 million that's out there, knowing that we have a $40 million future liability. But I think our, my biggest concern going into, from an insurance perspective, is the workers' compensation renewal and what that looks like, because just like the hurricane path, the buyer's market on excess workers' compensation is very slim, and there are two companies after the last renewal that even gave us a quote, and one was not even in the ballpark, like it was almost four times as much as what Safety National was. So, I am concerned that, but I have developed a good relationship with Safety National. They are the ones, they have a huge public entity book of business, so that is their specialty, but this does give me some concern.
Yeah. Well, I want to just offer my kudos again to whoever figured out how to do 1.25 as one single event.
Thank you.
That's super duper impressive, and if somebody works in that area, you guys deserve a lot of props, so thank you.
Thank you.
John?
Just have one question. Plus, I look forward to your report. I always enjoy reading.
Yes, sir.
But on the $11 million shortfall, are you amortizing that over a set period of time like we've done with our other liabilities, or you plan to, you've cooped it over five years? How do you plan to?
It's over the lifetime of the claims. So, it was, it's straight from the actuarial analysis that it's over the lifetime.
So, then you're making adjustments in the department charges for that individual, and that's part of the algorithm that you use?
Yes, sir.
And so, the max claim is X, so that's what I was trying to say, that, because then, if you have a mechanism, because that is a liability, there always must be forecasts of the paydown. So, is the last claim paid in 50 years, the last claim?
Could be, yeah.
And also, it can go up. So, has this deficit, did it go up from the last time we did this report? I couldn't.
It was, so it did, it did go up, I believe, where's the last page?
That little chart.
Yeah, it's in that chart. It's, it went from 2018, 40.9 to 41.4. So, we've seen a slowing of that increase of future liability because of our results over the last five years. But that's not to say, you know, I'm always, I'm one catastrophic incident away from blowing my budget.
So, when you're, I understand that, black swan event, everyone.
Right.
But if you're, but when you're looking at your annual increase in addition to what you're thinking happened in the marketplace, you also must be anticipating based on the trend line, what claims in excess of that, and you're basically charging a surcharge to prevent the deficit from growing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else at this point? Very important work you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, Ms. Lady, we have one more?
So, I think the next one is city council discussion of a city manager selection appointment process.
Okay.
And Ken Chandler, Regina, I believe, I believe you're up to give a short briefing of what happened last time?
You know, obviously, as we move forward, this is very important to engage, you know, in discussion among ourselves and, you know, with the public, you know, right up front. So, we're going to, you know, just give a preliminary, and I think at our upcoming retreat, you know, we're going to be able to discuss this, discuss this, you know, to come up with the best process possible. Thank you.
Council, Mayor and Council, I do want to introduce our, the world's greatest Human Resources Director, Regina Hillian.
All right. Wanted to just give you some information on the last recruitment process, so you can have that included in your discussion going forward. So, there were basically three components to the recruitment process last time. One was getting an executive recruiter onboard to actually handle the process. There was a feedback process that we used, and then, of course, we had the interviews and selection that we had to include in the schedule. So, as far as the solicitation for the executive recruiter, we used a request for quotes process, which is a lot faster process. It basically allows us to direct solicit some of the vendors who would handle executive recruitments. Last time, we started on July 16th, we had it open for approximately a week, and we got vendors who were interested in handling the recruitment. We received five of those. We evaluated them based on experience, capability, services, and price, and then we selected a firm. The firm that we selected the last time was Waters &amp; Company, and they were able to begin work with us basically a month later, so. And then, we also included in that recruitment process, process, an extended feedback process because we, at that point, we had not recruited for a city manager in about 24 years, so we wanted to make sure we took the time to get feedback from our employees, from the public as well. So, we had six focus groups of employees that we got information from. We had five employee groups, one director group that we talked with. There were 100 employees that participated in the process. All of the employees were informed about it and submitted their names if they were interested in participating. So, we were able to invite 100. This was coordinated by Human Resources and was facilitated by the mayor at the time. And we had all of those meetings held between September 11th and October 2nd, so within a month, we were able to get all of the meetings accomplished. Then, we had four town hall meetings. These meetings were actually coordinated by the city council, and they were facilitated by the executive recruiter in most instances. Some of you handled your own. Obviously, some of these were joint coordinated processes, so you could have, in a couple of instances, we had a single council member, and some of them, we had several council members who were hosting them together. So, in total, we had about 100 citizens who participated in these. And then, aside from that, we also had a virtual town hall process. This was coordinated by our communications office, and that was a way so that if the citizens could not give information by coming out, they also had that online process, and we did receive 68 comments from them. All of these opportunities were advertised via Facebook, VB.gov, Twitter, Nextdoor. We made sure we got the word out for our citizens and our employees to give the feedback if they were interested in doing that. We did get some common themes from all of them, integrity, visionary, they wanted a collaborator, good communicator, those types of things were the types of themes that we were able to get back from them. And then, last, we had the interview and selection. We advertised the position for just over a month, and by the early part of December, we were ready to conduct interviews. We received somewhere around 27, 30 applications, narrowed that down to a manageable number, and were able to conduct all of those interviews by the mid of December. And then, council deliberated and was able to make an appointment by January 26th. Okay?
Okay, any questions, please? Guy?
Thank you, Regina. Who conducted the interviews for the executive recruiter?
We evaluated them on paper, basically. There were two people that were from Human Resources that evaluated, and the mayor and the vice mayor were also part of that process.
And for the interview process for the actual candidates?
The executive recruiter handled that. The executive recruiter handled, coordinated the interviews. City council actually was the panel.
City council?
Yes. That was the panel.
Thank you.
John?
I'm just trying to clarify the scope, so I don't ask questions and consume time that are for another venue. So, are we just looking for feedback? Are we just, this is just a passive receipt to help us at the retreat? I just want to make sure that I don't have a conversation that isn't appropriate for this forum than another one, so I'm kind of unclear if I should ask a question or share an observation or just wait to the retreat.
Either or. You know, once again, the idea, I think, you know, the public has a right to know that we're taking seriously moving forward, you know, to hire a chief executive, you know, for.
And I'll share my thoughts. I just want to make sure it would be appropriate. First of all, I think that some committee of the council should be doing the review of who the executive, I don't care if it's the mayor and someone else, but I think the council should be doing the scoring and doing the evaluation of the solicitation, because it's for us, number one. That's one thing that would be different from last time. And I think if we are having some kind of conversations with employees, it shouldn't just be any one position, any member here who thinks that they think that would be constructive, so that we're, you know, everybody's having equal access to get information that they think they want, or we could do it collectively, however that's done, just because I think, and one person's coming to the table with one view that isn't shared by everybody else and you don't have a common, at least a common base you're starting from as you approach the interview process. One thing we didn't do last time, which I would hope we would do this time, and maybe I shouldn't say it when it's being broadcast, but whenever the candidates are chosen, one thing we never did, we never sent anyone to go visit these places as the, you know, the unknown tourist, so to speak, you know, and go and actually see these communities on the ground, and maybe it's by Tuesday, break it up and around, but so you have a feel for that community. That was something I thought was missed from the process last time. That's just, those are just three little observations. I thought overall, the interview process was well-done, but I think our prep to get to the interview process is a part that we could improve and be more informed about the communities and the candidates before we got to the interview process, to have a bigger contextual understanding of the candidate. That's my only observation.
I think those are great points and worthy of discussion and, you know, possibly implementation going forward. Okay, we're going to go with Michael, Rosemary, and Guy.
Well, I shared council members, Moss's kind of perspective on whether or not this would be a good time to share my views, but since we are sharing, and this is a matter of principal importance to me, I feel like it would be a good time to talk about the public engagement piece. And relative to the, to the presentation, to the, to the events that occurred in 2015 where the public was invited to participate in town hall meetings, I wonder if there would be a way where we could enhance the community engagement discussions on the selection of a city manager from that process in 2015. I think if we're staging, for example, employee focus groups, I wonder if we would have the ability to gather some community focus groups, key stakeholders, and I realize that we have to determine the process by which those individuals may be selected, and in some cases, it could be voluntary. But in my view, I would like to expand and to enhance the community engagement. But in my view, I would like to expand and to enhance the community engagement around this process. It's of principle importance that the public have confidence in the person who's selected for this job, and I think the more stakeholders we can get around the table and to involve in the process, the better it will be for our city. And so, I look forward to having that discussion in greater detail, but I will be looking for a greater and more enhanced public engagement piece.
Okay, Guy?
I just wanted to-
And Jess.
I think, I think John is right on the money in terms of going out into the areas. I think you can find out an awful lot about these folks. Someone said the best search they'd ever done for a new minister in their church was when they finally decided to actually go outside, not just go and listen to the sermons, but go walk around town and ask people what they thought of how the church was running and the like. I think we could learn from that. Also, I wanted, I sent to city council today during the meeting, just right as we started, a little brochure from a firm called Diversified Search, which was recommended to me by a friend in the search business who is semi-retired now. I said, I told him, I had dinner with him, and I told him about our upcoming search and some of the issues we've had and are looking forward to, and he highly recommended this firm. It's a, it's a firm that was started to promote women and make sure women got fair treatment in the search process, and it's since diversified, so that it now includes a broader cultural thing. But they have a comprehensive network of folks around the country and are very, very, I would say they're industry leaders in diversity, but they also have a very successful track record in terms of client satisfaction. I'm not, of course, we'll have the process, I'm a process person. I'm not promoting them, but I just sent one to you just so you could see. They have a little brochure for city managers, and they've even pushed a few buttons and made it say Virginia Beach in the right places. But that's, it's a kind of standard piece they've asked, but that's where it comes from. I thought it might be of interest to you.
Okay, thank you, Jess, and then Jim, and then Aaron.
Piggybacking on what's already been said, I think it would be beneficial that, it looks like there were four town hall meetings held last time. I think we should potentially look at trying to hold one in each district. One of the things that I get a lot of feedback on is how people want to come to some of these things, but it's either too far for them, so maybe trying to make that more accessible, and I think what Michael was saying about seeing other ways that we can make sure people are engaged, whether they have to just tune in to Facebook Live or a live stream, I think that would be something we should consider, and perhaps if we did it district by district, the district rep would want to be the point of, the point of contact for facilitating that. The only other thing I had is I want to, I hope that moving forward, when we start creating the advertisement to start searching for this person, that we are making sure we're not turning, closing ourselves off to the private sector and seeing what else is out there, and perhaps there's somebody who's run a company or has had experience at the executive level in a different fashion. I think we should really be open-minded to seeing what somebody from a different background could bring to our organization.
Yeah, I think, given our complexity as a big city and our needs, I think that would be a great idea. We have to be open to anybody that might be able to come in, because, once again, this is, it's a government operation, but it is also an operation that involves human resources and a whole plethora of skills, so I tend to agree with you. Mr. Wood, and then Aaron.
Thanks. So, kind of following up on what Jessica said, we all did town halls, but we ended up combining them because it was easier to work with the facilitator who was there, so I think, I think mine was with Louis and with Shannon, as I recall. I think we were at the convention center or something like that. We tried to do places like that, but I tell you, we have, and just in four years, technology's changed to the point where Facebook Live wasn't really a thing four years ago, it is now, obviously. Also, the survey tool that the city uses now is a lot better than that process that we used previous, because we tend to get a lot more response on that, you know, and we've talked about this, our response last time, in terms of the quality and quantity of the candidates probably was not as strong as it should have been. You know, just looking around at what we did with that particular firm, I wasn't overly pleased with that. I will tell you, just talking to some other folks, Chesapeake just had a fairly successful recruitment process with using the firm they did. By contrast, I think Norfolk had very few people apply, but they did not use an outside firm, so it's kind of how that works. But, so I would, I would say that one of the things that we probably should do is, as soon as possible, put out the requests in whatever format is best to solicit these firms, direct solicit the ones that we know are interested, and then put it out there so we can at least get this process going, and then if there wants to be a committee to evaluate these things, the searchers, that's fine, but I think it's critical that we get this process going. I feel that the person we're looking for is likely employed and is not looking for a job, a new job, and so that's, we need somebody who can, or an entity that can go find these people.
Aaron?
I would, I would say I would echo the sentiments of public engagement is a huge piece going forward, as well as making sure we can have community focus groups, it's an issue, but, you know, doing this, we do want a national search. I just want to make sure we, we don't overlook, we may have hidden gems here, and people may have opportunity or already employed with the city, give them a chance to step up as well. So, I think, you know, even though we want a national search, we want to allow people who've been working in the city an opportunity to apply as well, so I would just caution that we don't, we don't look so far that we miss what's right under our nose as well. And the other thing, the message when we, when we choose a firm, I think it's important that we define the message that we want and not let the firm define the message of the type of city manager that we're looking for. So, I think that's, that's, that's very important to me as well, that we define exactly to the firm what we're looking for, that we're clear on our message, so we can't have a successful process in the way we advertise this manager's position.
Great, thank you. Sabrina?
I also echo the sentiments of increased community engagement. I know that during our, I think it was during our retreat, we had different council members, they were allowed to invite a certain number of people in the community, key stakeholders. Not sure if that's appropriate for this, this task, however, if we're interested in making sure those key stakeholders come to the table, and we know some of them, or we just reach out and say, please let us know if you're interested, maybe that's something that we could do.
I tell you, that may be a great retreat topic in terms of the process on how we want to, you know, select. Certainly, we want to be eclectic when we pick, you know, the type of folks to bring to the table, to make sure that every major constituency and group, you know, does have representative in a say. But, you know, this was a good preliminary discussion, we can discuss it, you know, going forward, but with the councils, okay, if we could just even start today or tomorrow, start getting the word out, and if you can get the names that Guy mentioned and that the vice mayor mentioned, and, you know, let's at least get that, you know, started, and I concur with Aaron that, you know, once we do select a company and we get the inputs and everything, that we're, that this body is the one that actually, you know, defines the criteria going forward. John?
Since we are soliciting bids, and usually you evaluate bids, and usually you have to have some kind of factors, I assume, is that correct?
Correct.
That was the point I was trying to get at, is that, you know, if that's the source that you get the selection, the criteria that you pick, get to Aaron's point about what you're looking to do, the criteria is critical, so going fast without knowing what you're going to be assessing the firm on doesn't get you to the right necessarily destination. Now, maybe you could share with us what was the criteria the last time, that would be nice to know, because I'm like, Jim, I thought, I didn't necessarily think we got, we could have did better maybe, possibly, but I don't know if it was the criteria that drove it or the evaluators, but I think we at least need to know how we're going to assess and that everyone's comfortable with how they're going to be assessed, no matter who among us does it, or groups of people do it, we got to know what that is.
So, when purchasing works with us to do a request for quotes, that direct solicitation, they are evaluated on four factors. One would be the experience, so what have they done previously? What have they hired a city manager recently? Has it been a large organization, you know, that sort of thing? Their capability, who do they have on staff? Do they have enough people to carry it out in the timeframes that we want to have it carried out? You know, that sort of thing. What services are they going to provide? What are they recommending? What types of services did they include before? Did they include town hall meetings? Did they basically just do a pen and paper? What services are they recommending and what have they used? That's part of the evaluation process. And then, the last component that purchasing asks us to use, which we usually, they actually tell us the points that we give on that, is the price. So, those are basically the four criteria that have come into play.
Is the price an independent variable in that process?
Yes, and that's why finance handles that component. So, really, when you're evaluating, you're evaluating based on the first three, and then that is weighted, and finance then tells us how the price then makes that come out.
Since we don't really know how we plan to do our community engagement, I think that's a lot of discussion at the retreat.
Yes, yes.
Which I applaud you for calling, right? Will these people then, can they like, given, like, sometimes I go out with contracts and I say, I don't know how much I'm going to do with this, but I'll list the things I plan to do, and then they give me a price quote per unit of occurrence of that event, and then we decide how many events we're going to have. We know what their price is, because we haven't come to that term yet, because we're trying to do things in parallel, but you want to, also, you want to bound your costs. So, I just think we need to figure out how to give the council the flexibility to grow the cost to the extent that they participate in these events, at the same time, get to the mayor's point and Jim's point of acting faster to get some quotes in, so maybe you can figure out how to meet both those accordion kind of requirements, flexibility but specificity, if that makes sense? I just want to make sure we don't get locked in on the price, say, oh, no, we really want to do 10 town halls, we want to do this, we want to do that, and then we find out that, you know, wait a minute, your request didn't go out asking for that, now you've changed the scope of your procurement, and all those little legal people that help us, I say it in an affectionate way, of course. So, we, I just want to make sure we don't box ourselves in.
Okay, Rosemary?
Very affectionate way to them. And I think, and I totally agree with John about site visits. I've been a mystery shopper before, it's not quite the same, but it's still, you go in and nobody knows that you're there. At what point do you do that? You know, after you maybe narrowed it down to like two or three people and go out and do, be a mystery shopper for your city manager, but we didn't do that before, and I think that would have been really helpful, and we would have come back with more insights, I think.
Okay, well, so, you know, as I said, maybe if we can at least get that process, you know, this is going to be a protracted process for a couple of months, you know, but if we could get at least started by soliciting, and by the time we at least get the word out, because it's probably going to take time for them to do their proposals and everything, but meanwhile, we will have had our retreat, and we will have more explicit criteria that we want as individual council members and as a body going forward. So, you know, when these things, can, do come in, like Aaron said, we can actually define to them exactly what we're looking for and, you know, and, you know, better refine the process as we're going forward. Okay, I thank you all, thank you for that conversation. It's a good start, and we will continue it a week from today. Okay, at this point, county, city council liaison reports, anyone? John?
We are below the critical mass for a quorum with the Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation. We'll be making another appointment today, but if you know people, I've been out beating the bushes, and they see how much work is involved with that committee, it's really hard, and plus, things are going on. So, if you have people and ideas, share them with Mike and I, we'll go out and research them. We might have to fall back, I think, maybe to the recommendation that was once made of temporarily having some city employees serve on the board so they can conduct their business, because it really is, when we talk about affordable housing and what they do, they really have to have functional leadership. So, Mike and I will talk, and I'm saying that's what we're going to say, but just so you know, that is, I think, a mutual concern that we have, is getting them up to a functioning quorum on that group.
Okay, great. Anybody else?
I have comments.
Okay, we'll go to Calmont's comments now.
I'm sure some of you have received concern about the scooters with the upcoming storm. I called the regional director of Bird and sent an email to Lime, and Bird will have all of their scooters off the streets by Wednesday, the end of business Wednesday, in preparation for the hurricane, and I've been told by Lime that they're working on figuring out when they're going to be getting theirs off, but I thought that was something you guys would be interested in.
Okay, thank you, Barbara.
I've become more increasingly concerned about our appointment process to boards and commissions, because we seem to be doing it rather hurriedly, without the opportunity to, for us individually to vet the names that are brought to us. We do have a requirement already that each member of the council can review the applications 15 days prior to the appointment, and I don't think we follow that at all, because we kind of just hear an appointment, a nomination, and we're out there making the appointment without even having a chance to look at a talent bank application. So, I am proposing that we make, as a policy, that we, of course, only nominate for appointment people who have the talent bank application in, so that we could have looked at it, but also that we make this a two-step process, that we have to make this nomination before we go out there and make the appointment at another meeting, so that we do have the opportunity to talk with the potential person or whatnot. So, as this draft is proposed, and it's just a draft that the city attorney's office suggested, no person may be nominated for appointment unless that nominates potential appointment to the board or commission, as previously discussed by the city council during a prior council meeting. Such discussion may occur during the open or closed portion of the prior meeting in accordance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And I think this will allow us to all get more comfortable with the appointments that we're making. We're making these appointments to some very important boards, and I think it's important that we know more than just the name of somebody. I really want to have the opportunity to look at the background of the persons we are appointing and get comfortable. And so, I am going to just pass this proposed ordinance around and let you look at it, and we can talk about it, and if you agree, we can vote on it at a future meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. John?
Two things I want to bring up. First of all, you know, we had the proposed draft agreement on the wireless service authority, and I, and I, and I don't know how many of you have had the opportunity to read that thing in detail, but I don't think we would ever get the voters to vote those kind of powers and non-accountability if we had a ballot for our city charter, and I think that that agreement should have no less transparency, no less accountability, and no less specificity in some respects than the city charter does on ourselves. So, I took the time, and I'll pass this out, to do a very thorough review from my perspective, these are just my thoughts, what I thought were, I thought, government deficiencies in terms of a transparent and open government relative to the authority principle, first and foremost, you have to get everybody's permission to exit. Even SIPSA, you can leave, you don't, you have to, there's liquidated damages to pay, but they, the majority can't hold you hostage to stay when you want to leave. 13th Amendment, you know, outdid slavery, I don't know how we can be compelled to belong to something we want to leave, but that, and a couple of other things, I do ask you to read that. At the, the other thing I wanted to bring up, because I want to make sure we did, oh, I missed someone, I'm sorry. There you go, we have plenty of them over here, thank you, and there's one for the city manager as well, I apologize, I won't leave you out, is this bond referendum for flooding. I know it's going to be a future retreat, not in September, but I guess an October retreat, but while we, and that's, that's fine, as long, as long as in parallel, we had some past requests we made, what would that, what are those next group of projects that you, that would constitute that? And I just think it's important that that work of assembling that and the things we have to do to make the homework and timeline be being worked on while we make a decision whether we want to go, because if we say we do, and then the clock's against us, you can't get to victory because the clocks ran out on you. So, I just want to make sure that the parallel- So I just want to make sure that the parallel staff efforts that are necessary to have us know what that package would look like, we know what the modeling in terms of what it performs, what it puts us on the path, and it's a, much like the highway thing, it's not, you know, just based on person and what we want, but it really is from a scientific, engineering perspective, what delivers the best value, understanding there is a lot of kids at the table, and all seven kids want to eat, I understand that. But within that context, there needs to be an underlying, you know, objective analysis of how we get there, and I know the model should be the basis to help us do that. I just don't want us to lose sight of that, because you can only look at these events that are happening, and it's not a question of if, it's just a question of when it's our turn. And the question is, have we done as much as we could do in partnership with the people who have to pay the bill, our fellow residents, to be as prepared as we could be? And that's why I feel like we have a duty to provide them the choice. If they choose to assume the risk, the public has a right to assume risk. And then at the same token, we will continue on our incremental path, but I think a much more ambitious path is what's warranted, and I think we can make the compelling business case that it's the right thing to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wood?
Thanks. In discussions with the previous city manager regarding the retirement age, there was a request by at least two members of council for a survey that was done amongst employees. And that survey, I think they ended up putting out on the dais, so it'll be out there when you go out there, it's not here, but just so, that's what it was, it's the employee survey.
Thank you. All right, anybody else at this point? Sabrina?
Just a comment, made me, when Councilmember Henley was discussing the resolution, it made me think about, not sure if anyone else has received concerns about, I believe it's the vice chair, and I apologize in advance because I don't have the specific detail, but I wouldn't bring up them. Well, I've been getting, getting concerns from constituents about this particular person and what's happened, and so I bring it up because, you know, I want to know how to address it, because I'm not just hearing it once or twice, it's coming up several times. And if we want to discuss it during the closed session, that's fine, but it needs to be brought up.
Okay, and when it comes to a specific person with a name, it's best enclosed, but I think it's good that you brought it up and identified that.
Right, and I would never say the person.
Oh, yeah, not a problem at all. But, you know, during our things with the appointments, we can certainly bring that over, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wood, at this point?
Okay, we have a singular speaker on item one, three, four, eight, and nine. And then we have additional, a singular speaker plus one other on items two and five. So that leaves item six and seven as available for consent. If you all are okay with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you go over those one more time?
Six and seven.
Are the only things that are open. Okay, just to make sure I heard it right. Just for, if I may, I believe there was a new attachment A to number eight that clarified it.
Exhibit A, this thing?
Yeah, the exhibit A.
Right, so when we vote on that, do we just need to say, as per corrected version?
Yes, the difference is, there's one description there being 0.14 acres, it's actually 0.14 acres for the Verizon easement. Just wanted everyone to have the correct document before them.
Five point oh?
Zero point zero one four.
Rather than 0.14. I don't think it changes anything of substance, but we wanted it to be right, so.
Okay. Are we ready to proceed? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Sections 2.2, 37, 11A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Publicly held property. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect a bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2, 37, 11A 3. Dome site. Public contract. Discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where the discussion in an open session would adversely affect a bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2, 37, 11A 29. Dome site. Legal matters. Consultation with the legal counsel employed or retrained by the public body regarding specific legal matters regarding the provisions of legal advice such as counsel pursuant to Section 2.2, 37, 11A 8. Voter registrar office relocation. And personal matters discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotions, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2, 37, 11A 1. Council appointments. Council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Henley?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Hi, Mr. Rouse?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Power?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye. Okay, can we take a five-minute recess before we get rolling on this? Thank you very much.